Call this work session to order. I'll turn it over to Dr. Townsend for the budget workshop.
All right, thank you. Really, it's going to be a lot of Amy, as you know, but there are a few things we kind of want to set up for you, kind of as we talk about. As you know, the good news we found out last week was that's right now they're projecting 11% across the board cuts for QBE, but we heard from one of our local legislators in northeast Georgia saying that's just projected and that's early talks with OPB, Office of Planning and Budget. So not to get too excited yet about the 11% compared to the 14% because it still could happen the other way. So we do have to be cautious when we look at this budget process and look at it and kind of remember we're still waiting on the legislator to meet and we need to prepare for all the plans and hopefully we don't have to prepare for, which you don't know, but we do have to prepare for it, but you have to worry about the midterm adjustments later on, like in January, those austerity cuts they've done in the past. One of the things they'll try to do is not to have those again, you know, because at least if we know now what we need to plan for, it gives us time. But if we have all of a sudden cuts mid-year in January like we did a few years ago, if you remember, if you were on the board, then how hard it was mid-year to take those kind of cuts. So we definitely don't want that to happen, so we kind of have to kind of prepare a conservative budget as much as we can. We need to think about as we do it, and as we talked about before, like if you cut, try to cut through attrition, go that route. And if you see areas where we can kind of trim in those areas, we'll do it. I think one of the things you'll be pleased with today is we've left instructional money 100% intact. We felt that was important to have instructional money inside the classroom for the teachers. There's tools in place for the teachers. And so we want to make sure we can leave that intact. That's as of today unless something from the state changes. And we're just, again, waiting for them to meet. Unless that changes, it looks now, it looks pretty good. And Amy's going to go over that with you. And so as we developed this budget, as Amy dived into it and we dove into it, as you know, she's pretty conservative and looks at the bigger picture and tries to plan ahead. And when you plan a budget, it's not just one year ahead, it's always two to three years ahead. You have to look at what happens two years from now. If we can get through this first 11%, and we should, we should, but what happens two years from now? Well, we can still take a hit there because we've got to get fund balance and we're being conservative and proactive and done pretty well on cutting through attrition if the economy bounces back or not. So right now, we just have to be careful and not, and just remember, we want to be in that conservative mood. So when you see the budget presented today, you'll see that lens on itself of let's be conservative, yet do whatever we can for inside the classroom, for those teachers, support them, even looking at possibly a new learning management system for them that'll make, give them more tools if we do some type of virtual learning, which we will. We'll have a Pickens Virtual. Some of it will be where the parents would opt in, others could be where it'll be a blended model or because of the stage we're in because of COVID-19. And so you also see areas that we'll talk about in a few minutes. When we look at the revenue, you know, the CARES Act, one of the things I think, and I hope I'm not stealing your thunder, Amy, but it's one of the things, you can't always say we're going to pay for it with the CARES Act. Well, then we'd have millions and millions of dollars from the CARES Act and we're not. Right now, it's about 3/4 of a million, a little bit less. And so when you hear people go, hey, just pay for it with the CARES Act, pretty soon that adds up. It's like building a house. It's like if you do cost plus, and a lot of builders now do cost plus 10, sounds great in theory, but well, let's just add that, let's add that, and pretty soon you're over budget. So we don't want to do that. So we have to be careful and think conservatively, think fiscally responsible. And I know, knowing y'all, as I've gotten to know you throughout the past few months, it's a conservative board and we appreciate that, we do. And so we're kind of preparing for that, preparing for August 3 start date. We're shooting for the traditional model, of course, and if we're in the low or moderate range, we can go back to school, maybe a little bit differently from low to moderate, but we can still go back to school either way. And so you'll be throughout the board meeting tomorrow and throughout other board meetings or side committee meetings or task force meetings like we had yesterday, you'll see where we'll have a plan in place for everybody. And so our admin and teachers and parents and community members have had a part in that plan, will buy into it and will run with it. And we just appreciate your support. And you'll see some other cuts in a minute as you go through the thing, how bright from the start, we're still waiting on pre-K. That's a big question for us. And then it's going to be a board decision, you'll have my recommendation, but if they cut a pre-K classroom, do we fund it? If they cut the days, do we fund it? I definitely want to support those extra days because if you look at some of the issues with reading and lower grades, we want as many kids as we can in pre-K. They come through our pre-K, we're pretty successful with them, pretty effective. So we want to keep as many kids as we can in those younger grades, especially in pre-K, before they start school in our buildings and preparing them for kindergarten. And so those kind of things are important and you'll see money, we'll be recommending targeted money for that if they do cut the days. The big question's going to be, what classrooms are they cutting? We don't know yet. We don't know if Pickens will be affected by that or not. If it is, that'll be another question. That'd be something to think about as we go through this budget and look at the big picture. Is that a priority? If it is, let's make it a priority. If not, let's kind of wait and see what happens. So those kind of questions as we go through the budget to think about, you'll hear a little about some federal cuts, still haven't heard a lot about that, even though they may give you money through the CARES Act, they may cut someplace else. And so those kind of things we're looking at. And so I'm going to let Amy kind of jump into it and just want to kind of give you a preview of kind of what to look at. I know you've looked at the notebook already, but as you ask questions, and we know you'll have questions and that's okay. We know that's what you have to do, you're supposed to. You're supposed to be a good steward of the money for the taxpayers and we appreciate that. And we appreciate any questions you have. And if I don't know it, then we'll definitely defer to Amy, but if she doesn't know it, we'll both get back to you and make sure you do have an answer.
And one thing right now, since we don't have a lot of answers, we've got a lot of questions. So what we've done is we put this budget together as though we were coming back to school as normal with a few changes. On your first page of why is anyone budget concerned? Of course, our revenue. The biggest hit that we are aware of so far is that QBE reduction of 11%. Originally, they said estimated 14 to 15, so when they went down to 11, it was a little better, but it's still over $2.7 million from the money that we received this year. I'm getting too close. And I'm getting a lot of feedback from people in the community saying, oh, we all getting CARES money, so that will take care of that. We're going to lose 2.7 plus, we're going to get $747,601 from PECs. That's not going to come close to offsetting the loss. So like Dr. Townsend said, we have lots of people lining up wanting that money, but one thing we can do with this is offset a state or local revenue loss. So that is what we will do.
How much did you say we're going to lose on CARES?
No, we're going to gain on CARES, 747,601. In your book, it's the second page.
Got it, yeah.
I'll go ahead and talk about bright from the start. We've received, we had a webinar where we were informed that the plan, and keep in mind, everything right now is a recommendation, it has not been voted on, but the plan is to take the Bright From The Start pre-K program from 190 days to 167. They are also going to cut over 1,000 classrooms across the state. They have not notified the counties who will lose their programs. So we are in a holding pattern. So I estimated the cut, it is in special revenue, but we honestly, we don't know what that's going to look like. If we lose a class, it will be vastly different than that. I had put in 250,000 for that. We were 267 this year, we estimated the cut. The way they do their cut is a little different than what we have. So again, it's a kind of waiting game. So there may be, there may be significant changes to what we're presenting today, but we wanted to at least get you kind of where we are right now. Our local revenue flow has been disrupted or slowed because of COVID. Lots of things have been closed, including the county government office where taxes are paid. Our SPOST incredibly has, it has stayed, it went up for the month of March because I think everyone in Pickens County bought everything there was to buy in Pickens County, went down a little bit for April, and has now shot back up. This month, y'all, I think you'll be real pleased with our revenue amount for SPOST for this on the budget, the board report this month, this month. So it has come back up. What is happening in other areas like intangible tax and real estate transfer tax, they have held. There was a little bit of a spike, but they seem to be holding. You'll get a spike and then a slump. And so so far, you know, we've still got a long way to go, but we're holding our own. TAVIT has hit a little bit of a slump and that's that where you pay your sales tax when you purchase a vehicle instead of the old birthday tax. A little bit, but we had a high month and then we had a low month. So we're still, we're still okay with those. The biggest hit we've taken so far is property tax collections. In the month of May, we received $115,000. That is very low for us for this time of year. We need at least another 400,000. The offices having to close occasionally, so, and they've also been deferred. People are not required to pay certain things right now and sometimes they don't if they know they don't have to. So those revenues, we're watching very closely to make sure we can get through the end of this year. QBE is in place. It is, it is going to stay just like we were told it would be. We've got a midterm adjustment, got an extra 140,000. All of that is still in place, so that's half of our income. So we're just going to keep watching those and see if we can come out of this year. Hopefully, we can come out with maybe a little extra, but if we don't collect that 400,000 issue in property tax, we may just have a break even. We may not have anything to carry over to put toward this budget. If everything was normal, we should have money to carry over. But right now, it's a waiting game to see what payments come in. And we don't control when that revenue comes in either, we just wait for the checks. Federal grants right now, most of the federal grants we're hearing from, we have absolutely no information. We've done estimates based on what we received this year initially. We've not been given any indication whether they'll be cut, other than something like bright from the start. And that's truly a state program. But the federal grants, we're hearing nothing, crickets. So we haven't heard a cut, but we haven't heard that we'll, we haven't been told, here's your allotment. We normally know something about our allotments by now, it's June. So that is concerning. On the next page, expenditures in response to the severe reduction in revenue, we're trying to cut in several different ways. Reduction of certified and non-certified positions through attrition. As people resign or retire, we are just looking at every slot and saying, can we do without this? And I have to give kudos to our principals. They have been diligent since we talked to them about this. When something has come up, they have said, let me look, I might not need that teacher. So we are not doing away with any programs at this point. It's just as people resign, we're reevaluating the class size, the duties, everything. And we have a few that we still, that aren't included in here, we might be able to reduce. We need to make sure before we make that call. But we do have a reduction of a couple of teaching spots in here. Allowable expenses be transferred to SPOST. Inevitably, technology or MNO have some things that are medium-sized projects that we might not put into SPOST because we try to hit large projects in SPOST. We tweaked around, we were able to move about 52,000 from technology into SPOST. It's perfectly allowable, it's just we had kind of saved that for big stuff. MNO is tougher. A lot of that, we already have the big projects planned in SPOST, so it's really hard to pay down the medium-sized ones. Those are the ones that surprise us, like a pipe breaks and we flood an entire hallway in a school. So I wasn't able to do much with that, but what I was able to do under CARES, it allows you to shift expense, and one of them is utilities. CARES is federal. Originally, it was going to be a state grant. It was going to come from the feds into the state and be distributed to us and be state, a state grant. If it was, I could put certified salaries in it and still earn my TNE for them, but they changed their minds. So the first documents we got said it was going to be state. Then they changed it. It is now a federal grant. If I put a certified person in there, I cannot earn TNE, so we can't do that. That can be 38% of someone's pay gross state base. So we needed to find something else that when you would be pretty consistent, when you do salaries, there are lots of little pieces to it. If you have one person quit, one person transferred, there's a lot of movement in those. But one of the things they let us do is utilities. We always have power bills, we always have gas bills, we always have water bills, and they stay pretty consistent through the year. So at this moment, we have taken a chunk of MNO and we have assigned it to CARES. Another thing with CARES is there are some federal, because it's federal, there are a few federal requirements that we'll have to set aside certain amounts of money for things like private school. And we do have some private schools that are going to claim that right this year. And of course, the use of our fund balance. We have a solid fund balance. It's your savings account, basically. So it is something we'll have to look at this year and more than likely use a chunk of. Let's turn over to page one, and this, most of you have seen this before. This is our summary, and this is kind of cheating because you can see the end result of everything we've done. The revenue sources up at the top, I've done conservative estimates when it comes to those taxes I was talking about, TAVIT, real estate transfer, railroad car equipment, and forest land protection. One thing I've noticed about real estate transfer and intangible is when those mortgage rates go down, those numbers go up. People are refinancing and therefore it drives those fees, those taxes up. So that does help us. If car sales go down, TAVIT's going to go down and follows that. So like I said, we kind of went up and went down, but if those rates stay low, we'll probably see, it'll probably average out. I think it'll, I don't think we'll get a major slump. QBE, you can see the reduction there. And the only thing that we actually heard yesterday or this morning, we have a lot of meetings and a lot of phone calls and a lot of webinars right now, but in the last 24 hours, we were really hoping the other state grants, vocational, we have not received word that they were going to be cut until today. It was this morning, too.
This is morning.
This morning. Categorical grants that are captured in QBE, we knew they were fair game. We knew that they'll probably get hit for the 11%, but things like vocational, I'd even talked to our vocational supervisor and said, what are you hearing? Because they have a huge lobby. And if anybody can hold their own, it's them. And he has heard nothing. But this morning, we were given the indication that more than likely the state special ed grant and the vocational grants, and we have several others like math and science supplement, they will probably all be hit. This does not consider that. These are conservative numbers, but they could be lower than this. So the information is very slowly coming in, but until the legislature meets and makes a decision and votes, it's all up for grabs. But we have about a $2.8 million reduction. As you can see, as you go down through the expenditures, most of the time you're going to see a negative number. We'll go through each section and let you get a little more detail. Most of these changes have either been, we were able to eliminate a position. TRS, believe it or not, is decreasing for next year. It's going from 21.14 to 19.06. That has been a lifesaver right now. But in '22, it goes back up. So, you know, don't, don't get excited for too long, but for this year, it is, we're catching a break as long as they don't change their mind. Now, they've already, they just recently voted for the '22 rate. I think if they were going to change it, they would have done it at that time. But, so we should be good for '21, but that has been a lifesaver when it comes to this budget. Okay, let's flip on over to page two, and this is instruction at the top. We, I took actual salaries, we can roll them up to see what their salary would be for next year. Of course, this includes no salary increases other than a required state step. You know, teachers are on a schedule. If they're up for a step, it's in here. We have gone through our teaching positions and we've been able to tweak that and pull them down a little bit. We may be able to reduce it a little bit more, but I don't want to get too carried away. We don't know what we're going to face in the fall. Right now, we sent a survey out and the indication from parents was 25% did not want to send them back to brick and mortar. They want to keep them in some virtual setting. So 25% of the respondents, if that is applicable to all students, that is over 1,000 students, it's almost 1,100.
And we don't think that's going to happen.
We don't.
But you still have to kind of know it's out there. If it goes down to 10%, there's still over 400 kids.
Yes.
So we have Pickens Virtual.
That's one of the reasons we're talking about virtual school and that we have, we have this committee, the task force, put together to look at how we would deliver those things. One thing I need from my committee out of that group is every committee has to do an impact report for finance. I need to know of the ideas you think will work and if we need to do, give me, you know, we need this added to the budget or this needs to be considered in the budget. And we've got to put price tags on things, if there are price tags. Dr. Townsend mentioned, and you'll see, I broke it out as a separate line, the LMS. It is a way to make that virtual learning a little easier. Right now, we have, we have five or six bids. The lowest two, they're still looking at.
Yeah, strong, yeah, four or five, we're down to pretty much two.
And the cost would be around $40,000. So I have plugged it in, it will actually go down to the school level, but right now, we don't know that number for sure, so I'm going to keep it where I can see it easily. But that is a consideration. If other things come out, I know there may be some cloud-based software that comes out of it. There's some, there are price tags attached to all of those items, and right now, we don't know, we may be able to use what we've got, we may need to not use some things we have and get a different program. So they are evaluating all those things, and that's teachers and principals and assistant principals and supervisors and, I mean, we have a little bit of everybody on the committee, so, so they're evaluating by age group what they think would be the best plan for us to deliver next year. But no matter what, I don't know that we'll get to zero with the virtual. So we do have to have a plan and we do have to have a method. If we do something like an LMS, it can be used for other things. If we have a snow day, we might be able to use that as, instead of missing a day. And we have found out that we can work offsite, so it's great for employees. Like my department has done very well once we got over the initial shock of, we're working from home and we don't have our equipment and we, so we've kind of gotten everybody settled with it. So it is good to know that we can do that. As we go down, pretty much all the, all the positions in instruction, the only reductions at this moment have been, we've got a couple of different positions in some other areas that I'll get to in just a minute, but right now, officially, there are only two teaching slots that have been removed here. There will probably be one or two more, but I don't have confirmation on that just yet. One happened yesterday, or the day I had, the day I finished the book. So, but we'll keep working with that. Another thing is we have reduced by, or we are planning to reduce by six parapros. We gave last year six floater parapros. When we asked the principals, is there anything you can, you can give up? Is there something that would be easy for you to give up? We had some discussion. We really wanted to leave their instruction alone because we don't know what we're facing. If you see a reduction down here in the operating, they had a textbook adoption. A few of them did have a textbook adoption, so they didn't get that money back, but their normal operating is impact. Since things are so unknown, we do need to leave them the funds and the tools to work with whatever situation we face when we come back in the fall. But the floaters got brought up. Now, this doesn't mean we're, we're getting rid of people. We already have four paras who resigned so far. We have the option to potentially bring some of those paras that the school chooses to into Title I. So we've already begun working on that. There's something else that if we do go through with it, it's a consolidation of some general fund money and title money that opens up some flexibility for the schools. So we actually, there was a training yesterday at the same time that meeting we were having was going, so we had people watching it. And we still need to go through some, some information about that. But of the six schools, four of them are potentially interested in pulling that position into Title I. One doesn't, doesn't seem to want it. And the high school's not involved in Title I, so we kind of left them alone in that conversation. But if we could reduce those paras, it would help. It's about $164,000, but you just move it to federal programs. Now, the other part of that is like Dr. Townsend said, when we get in here, depending on how many kids we serve, we have an FTE count in October. If we lose 100 to 200 students and don't earn them, we already have staff that's contracted. So we could come up in March and get a little piece of paper that says, we're not sending you X amount of money. In the past, sometimes the state has decided to hold us harmless, which means we're going to tell you, you were going to lose this money, but we're not going to keep it. I don't know what they're going to do this time. I'm very concerned about that FTE count. There is chatter that they are going to hold us harmless on the FTE and leave it as it was recorded in March. So there are a lot of unknowns about that. Hopefully, we will have those answers before school starts.
We will. That'll be right after the legislative session, it is going to be a big push. I've talked to quite a few people, quite a few legislators, and so there's some support for that. It really goes down to, again, can, will OPB, Office of Planning and Budget, support that when they make their recommendations to the governor? Then it'll be the governor's decision, of course.
So that, go ahead.
You know, I really appreciate leaving the instruction money and that support because I think that's very important that we have that support for the teachers and classrooms. But, you know, I went through this page by page and I've just got some questions and it basically is, I guess, really kind of clarification, if that's okay, if I can ask some questions.
Sure.
And on this page, I've got a couple of questions on this. And y'all kind of alluded to this and this may have been answered, but I just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
You know, we've got the pre-K teachers and we're going to increase to 27,000 there. Is that maybe to supplement where they're potentially getting cut? I mean, is that totally not?
No, this actually is to address our special ed pre, state pre-K. This year, we did not budget enough to cover the teachers. As you have staff changes, you have people with different experience and certification levels. When we made, we had a change, the two teachers that are doing that program were more expensive than the ones we had. So we had not budgeted enough. I thought I had the correct names, but a change was made and they're more expensive. My indication is that's who will be back. So more than likely, it got swapped from another category, but we only have two people in that category. Sometimes it's only one and a half. It depends on the federal grant because they're, this is split with a state, and this is a state grant, but there's a local piece too, and a federal grant. There's also a parapro in there and supplies for those special ed students. So we have to be through requirements of the federal grant, the state grant, and then the local picks up whatever's left. So sometimes it's hard to, we actually have to sit there and try to figure out what person we can put where. If you split fund somebody between federal and state, they have to keep a time log, which is very time consuming. So we try to work that around, but we had staffing changes that affected that.
Okay, the next question on this page, the parapros, the 318,000.
Look down.
Okay.
Go down to the bottom. Last year, remember, we started going with a company, we're contracting out with a company. So you're going to see 300 of that came down here into operating. It's no longer a salary, but that was done really after we had done tentative approval. So I really don't like to change large items without bringing it back.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I saw that throughout, but I just wanted to make sure I'm at.
But where it says those ESS parapros down, very bottom line on instruct, on operating. So it actually only went down about 18,000. So, so 300 moved down to operating because I have to pay them under contracted services.
Okay. And last question for this page.
Go ahead.
Why is there an increase in the DOVA expense? Because we've got, like, on the DOVA, it's, let's see.
Now, where are you seeing DOVA?
Uh...
Are you showing all that?
Yeah, it's like a $33,000 increase.
We received information actually today. Last year, our North Star program cost about $200,000. It's going to be 260 for next year.
All right. Well, I'll go ahead and ask this question.
Okay.
This was a later question, but all right, on North Star, don't we pay for kids that we send there?
No.
So what we send?
No, it's, it, they...
Kids in there under what we pay right now?
What we pay, we actually receive, it's a three-year average that is calculated that they actually send to us. And like I said, I actually got an unofficial notification that's, that's actually a little higher than what I had estimated. But it has to do with how many children were served in the program over the past three years. The cost of the program and then it's then divided out because they serve a multitude of counties. So they're able to break some people up to serve more than one county. We may not have a full-time so... We may not have a full-time so-and-so coming to do service. So we have that, you can see if you want to, but it is a breakdown of what is going to cost them to provide the service among all our, all of our counties and how many students we send there.
Okay, so that, that is North Star and not, not DOVA?
That is.
Which, alternative education?
Okay. All-in is going to cap, that one is going to capture anything in the, like ISS, we have ISS parapros and teachers. They are considered all-in, so they can be funded there. Some of it is up in instruction. We don't earn enough money to cover all of these expenses. We only earn, I should have brought glasses because this is tiny print. I can't believe that now.
Just. I'll be glad to share the glasses.
I was going to say, I'll just stay on the top. I do not have the page I need, actually. We earn, if I remember correctly, I think it's about 232,000 between the ISS classrooms. We have two ISS paras at two different locations, JMS and PJ. We have an ISS teacher at high school and then North Star. Any other alternative programs, anything outside of the normal classroom, you know, can, will be billed there. So if we have to send somebody out to some kind of specialized program, which as far as I know, we don't have right now, but those, those positions, they exceed, but I still have to budget the expense if I know it's going to happen. We also have to provide the same supplies for those North Star students that we do for ours. If they have a textbook at, in third grade at Jasper, or Hill City Elementary, we have to provide those things, including computer equipment. That still goes within, so anything they need in any of those classrooms gets coded here.
All right. And since we're talking about North Star, all right, since they're in one of our buildings, do they pay us rent or do they lease that building?
We pay them. They use, they use our building.
And we pay them?
And we pay them. Most, most, all systems do the same thing. We've, we've questioned that before.
So, I mean, I know this is just, it, I mean.
I, I will say this, this, this might help a little bit. We did some estimates on what it would take for us to take the program over, over, we've done it two or three times. For us to be able to provide the service, it would cost us more than we pay them.
Actually, I mean, I really thought that's what DOVA was doing. I thought DOVA was replacing the alternative.
Now, DOVA was a discipline issue. These are, it's a different type of alternative, yes.
Okay. But we, we get no, we don't get any tax write-off or anything off that?
We don't pay taxes.
Well, but I mean, we don't get any kind of credit or, I mean, we don't get anything from them. So if they didn't have our building, what would they do?
They would have to rent something, I would assume.
Then they'd private charges.
They would, they would just hand it up. What it is, is they take their total operating expense for all their sites, divided by the num, average number of students they've served for that county over the past three years and break it out by county and we all pay a piece. So it, it's driven by how many students are in there for Pickens County.
Okay. All right. May I ask you just one question?
Sure.
If art, music, P.E., an increase of 318,000, is that salary or is that?
Absolutely. That, all, all those 100 codes are salaries. So that is a position that, more than likely, there may have been a position where I didn't know that they were not a 110, they were a 118. Music, art, P.E. and foreign language. If we add any of those, that, any dance, any kind of music, any of those things, they have to be coded to 118. Okay, at the bottom, like I said, with operating, you're going to see, you shouldn't see much change in any of the schools unless they had a textbook adoption. One school actually voluntarily cut about $8,500 off their budget. They just said they, they didn't need it. So I appreciate that when they do that.
Which school was that?
Harmony. She has a little bit of an influx right now. She has a couple of grants, so she, she actually said, I've got a lot of money, I can cut this a little bit. So we appreciate that very much. But like I said, the principals have been really good to say, let me look at this and see if it's something that, do we absolutely need to have it? Now, we haven't forced it, but like I said, we did not go after instructional expense right now. It's just such an unknown. We may have to later. We may have to have them each pay for a piece of a software, if we need a virtual software, but, and, and they all know this. They know we've left it alone and that we may have to readjust some of the items that they, they want. They might have to tweak things a little bit. We talked about the LMS and the ESS parapros. When they go to contracted, I have to remove them from salary and put them down there. So overall, for instruction, it is still a reduction. Now, this means it covers all the step increases, which total, most of the time, it's pushing around 250 to 300,000 dollars a year. So that TRS reduction was over $200,000, so that helped offset that too. I, I pulled it tighter than I have before. We still left, we have our average teacher makes about $62,000 in salary. I left five positions, just like I always do, because if we walk in the door and need a teacher. So that is on the table. If it has to be removed, we can, but that means if we need a slot later, it's not there. We would have to come back to the board and, and do something else, either hit fund balance or something. So they're there right now, but also, we have certificate upgrades and they total, depending on the year, around 100,000 a year. I'm not always aware of who is pursuing a certificate upgrade. We typically have around 10 to 12 per year. So I've had years when they had, they were $150,000 worth and I've had years when they were $40,000 worth. But it, I think it would be irresponsible not to think any of our group is going to pursue a higher certificate. I just got another one today, so. Do y'all have questions on those two? Any more questions for those two? Now, from page four, and y'all know this is the fun part. All the schools' individual budgets run from page four to page 31. Excuse me, excuse me. Now, this covers kindergarten through 12th grade, gifted music, art, P.E., band, any class that we have. So this is their instructional money. It's all remediation. Anything that's not tied to a federal grant, this is just general fund. But I'm going to let y'all go through those in your spare time.
Well, actually, I'm going through.
Okay.
I've got questions on this.
Okay.
And I mean, like I said, most, most of this is just clarification, explanation.
All right.
Let me go ahead and ask you this.
Sure.
All right. On page four.
Okay.
And, and six, so, but, okay, why do we have, and this may be just a coding question, but why are substitutes under contracted services?
That's, we go through ESS, yes. They, instead of us paying them through salary now, we go through that company, the third party. We cannot pay a company out of salary. We must do it out of an operational. So we moved all that. You'll see, we have no 113s and 14s up there anymore. They're down here now.
Okay. And now, is the, it says, you know, and I'm just, I know this, you'll see, just first one up right here, but why are you sure it's hard music, P.E. teachers? Now, is that, is that because we pay for all that local? We don't earn those in elementary schools or?
With, with any teacher that you earn FTE for, you earn pieces of days, you earn a few days. We give our certified staff 12 and a fourth sick, sick and personal days a year, it's a day and a quarter a month. What it is, is there is specific state coding. If you contract it, where it's just contracted services, 300, that's for parapros, but it's also for other contracted services. So it may not always be subs, but it is some of the time subs. So say a kindergarten para pro needs to be absent for three weeks. We would contract through ESS to provide that para pro and they would bill us and we would write the check to the company and it would have to go in, in 300. If it's a teacher, it's a 321. But if it's a music art or P.E. teacher or foreign language, it's a 322. That is state rule. We just have to adhere to that. Yes, it's fun to break some of that out. And you'll see sometimes, I've only budgeted 321, that is absolutely the most common one. They, it can be spent in any of the three categories. To break it out to all of them, it is a guess what those subs are going to be. As you know, anybody who's been in education knows, you don't know where your maternity leave is going to hit, if someone's out on medical leave. We try to give them an average budget, but if I need to move it from school to school, we can do that. We don't like, I don't penalize them. I actually take the subs off the table when they look at their budget so they know how much operating they really have. But I have to have it in here for y'all to see. And you'll see that at every school.
And so, like, you know, okay, like, on, on page six, it was like $27,000 under the art, music, P.E. It says subs six, so, but with that, it's not really like, general.
Well, yes, that's actually supposed to be on line 321. I apologize. It should be up one block, but it is also for grades one through three.
Okay.
And like I said, it is for any teacher in that band at that location. But it can be a para, a regular teacher or music art or P.E.
Okay.
And I just missed the line. I am getting blind. I've realized that with this lately. Okay, what you got next?
Well, the next thing, I just, just quit on, page nine, I just spent the data somewhere over. I'm looking at that right, look at the very bottom, last line.
Yes. On, let's see, this is Hill. At the, during the COVID issue, one thing that came to light was our K-2 students were struggling trying to work on the computer from home. Parents were struggling. So the elementary principals got in touch with me. I got in touch with Dr. Webb, who was the superintendent at the time, and we actually purchased workbooks to be sent out to every K-2 student. We did not think it was fair, even though her budget wasn't available. There was, there was enough room in the budget as a whole. It is something that is normal for operations, but we haven't gone over instruction and won't at the end of the year. But at the time, it, they felt it was, in fact, she started to not get them for everybody and we said, if we're doing it for the other two elementaries, we need to do it for her too. So we, we did it for all of them.
Okay, yeah.
So it, it didn't matter if they were out of money. They were all closed, but we knew we had extra money, so he, okay, the expense.
That is good. Okay, well, a lot of mine were contracted services, we saw that, which is a lot of.
And I'll give you another example too. You will see a few places, and one in particular, I'm going to point out in just a second, but you'll see places where that 300, now we're doing those permanent parapros through that contracted service too. They weren't budgeted there. They were budgeted in salary, so where I've moved that this year, we'll actually push that into the schools, but I wanted you to see that line item, that I moved it from one place, from salary to that contracted. That is another reason, if they're over in those 300s, those permanent paras, that's a much larger expense than they normally have there. But that was done a little later too, so I had it in salary. It was not moved down, so I have monitored that. Like I said, I pick all that stuff out and just show them their operating budget. So some of that was for those paras too, because I do happen to know, certain schools, they didn't all have those permanent contracted paras. Most of theirs came out of salary. So they've never seen that. They don't have to deal with that. We deal with that for them.
But, you know, like, we'll get to, they'll say the junior high, you know, they've got private services for teachers, you've got 40,000.
They had two, we call them pick paras. They had two pick paras. They're $27,300 apiece. So when they go over, sometime during the year, a para resigned and we replaced them with a pick para. So that's what happens.
Okay. I mean, that answers, you know, a lot of questions online, big numbers.
Yes. And like I said, I wanted you, y'all to see that 300,000 change, but I will push that up into the schools to take care of those, so it won't look like that next year.
And this is just a question out of curiosity here.
Okay.
And I'm, you know, looking through on travel and all that kind of stuff. Like, if a person is getting a supplement, they still get to turn in travel, it's for them, travel.
A supplement for what?
Well, if they're getting a supplement for.
As an administrator for sports.
So, exactly that.
Okay.
So, it's example, that's right.
Even if they're receiving a supplement, supplements are really for additional time. If they travel on behalf of the school system, they are eligible under state rule, SOA travel, to request travel reimbursement. Many of our admin, admin staff don't ask for reimbursement, but they can. When it comes to sports, it's a different issue. It can't even go in this area. But if it's travel here, it's probably been to a conference, it could be that we, we've made them travel to another school. We do have some attendent teachers that will start their day at one location and we set the schedule and make them go to a separate one. They don't get mileage to the first school, but they can get mileage in between and they can't get mileage home. But if we set their schedule like that, they can ask for mileage reimbursement.
On page 33.
Okay. Now, that's the next section. We haven't gotten on there yet. Go ahead, go ahead. People's services. If y'all are, does anybody else have questions about instruction? Are y'all good? Okay. The next area is people's services. This is where our social workers are testing, trying to think what else. I'll go blank sometimes on this. Testing, nurses, there are multitude, the, the supplies for the counselor are here, but the salary for the counselors is in instruction and this is all defined by the state. I just have to play by the rules on this. So overall, we moved the county nurse before the title changed to director of, when you're county nurse, you're in 163 as a nurse. When you become a director, you're a management and you have to move to a 190 classification, 190 or 191. So you'll see where I have moved the county nurse from nurses to director of nursing services. I think that's right. But we also moved her, y'all approved moving her to a 12-month contract for next year, so that is included in here too. Overall, it's, the salaries and benefits increased about 3.7%. And the operating, one thing is in the nursing supplies, we are trying to prepare for next year. This does not include all the PPE that she is anticipating. We are still waiting on some estimates and some quotes. I, I expect at least another 7,000 in a request for certain types of protective equipment. Some decisions are being made about who will need what and that is still a little in the air, up in the air. We will have AED supplies and equipment that need to be replaced next year and they're, they're noted within the budgets. Let's see, I was trying to think if anything else changed. We did add, move some sub money to nursing because we do occasionally have to have a sub for them. Under central office, we are requesting to change the benchmark RTI program from what we had this past year. The principals are aware, one program that is K-8 was, the program we used last year was $20,000. The one that is being requested is $47,000, but has been reviewed by the principals involved, the curriculum director and assessment director, and they do think it is a needed change. We were piecemealing some things. The high schools, I don't have yet. They are still in the process of making that decision. If they want the program, I think they're going to request, it's about $22,000. So we would have to increase this budget, so that's something I'm waiting to hear. The state may provide a free benchmarking program next year, but it does not address RTI and we don't know right now if they'll do it or not. That's the thing, it's not set in stone and we're concerned that it won't happen. So that's something that's still up in the air just a little bit, so there may be an adjustment here. Overall, this is an increase of $121,000. Overall, this is an increase of a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
And if I can add to, if we're in a moderate stage, you're still at school, but it's going to cost a little bit more money for those P P E supplies as well. Just because of sanitizers, the amount of times you do a room, wipe downs. Optional mask, mask would still be optional, but more people may take part of it if, if we're in that moderate stage. So those, and that could be weekly. One week you could be low, next week you could be moderate. So we just have to be ready cleaning-wise and sanitary-wise at all times.
And most of the cleaning supplies are going to come out of M and O. We have spent in excess of twenty thousand dollars on hand sanitizer and wipes. About the second or third week of March, we'd already hit that limit. We've bought more since then. It is getting weird, you know, we had a period of time where we couldn't get things. And then you can't even get a quote. We are beginning to be able to get those things. But the nursing supplies are the basic nursing supplies. We did buy thermometers, the one that's touch-free, we have some. Depending on what comes out of the committee, if we need them on every bus, that's a whole different ballgame. We bought like eight locally, and I think a local vendor may be able to provide some more, maybe another eight to twenty. But if we need them on every bus, that's, that's sixty-one buses. So those things are still being looked at. So there are still some significant expense. Those are forty dollars apiece. So just so, you know, you get the real picture, even though some things we, we already anticipate, there may be some adds to this. I know she's already come back with about seven thousand in P P E. So, but that would cover the nurses for the whole year. And that's, it could be masks, gloves, whether or not we have to provide face shields and things like that. But the thermometers are a big thing. They're just expensive. Did you have a question, though? No? Okay. Again, behind the first two pages of people's services that are on page thirty-three and thirty-four is each individual schools. And really, the schools, all they have is supplies for their counselors. So they're small budgets, but they, they do appreciate these funds. We do try to allot the same amount per student for schools. If their numbers change drastically between now and when school starts, we may have to swap it around. If this school grows by fifty and this one drops by fifty, we'll have to shift money. So they know that, though, as we go into this. We use estimates or the F T E count to assign those numbers. Let's see, on page forty-one is the central office operating budget and it is the student code conduct. One thing I did want to point out that did go up a good bit is portion of occupational and physical therapist. That is a, it is considered a supplemental or a support service. We do still, when, when we can get the parents to sign off, earn Medicaid money for these. Last year, it cost us about ninety thousand dollars. This year, it was already over a hundred and thirty, but we're able to earn maybe ninety thousand of that hundred and thirty back. So I still have to budget the whole expense, but I also budget the revenue on the other side. So just so y'all know why that went up so much, anyone that will allow us to build Medicaid, we will, we will pursue that. And we've actually done a pretty good job. I think the department that handles it has done a really good job of pursuing those. If the parents will not sign off on it, we can't report it to Medicaid. We can't earn the money, but we still have to provide the service most of the time.
I mean, is there, I want to talk about the student code conduct, and I know that's very necessary with this age of technology. Is there any way we can do that electronically?
That has been discussed many times. There, and that is something that we'll probably go around again about. We are learning more and more about how many, what percentage of our students do not have reliable internet access. Some have access to a phone. We have, we're trying to narrow those numbers down because we're going to have some other issues with this. But we have looked at it. At this point, no decision has been made to do it totally digitally. So I am still going to put this in here. If it changes, we can, we can reduce that. There will still be a production cost of some sort, but it might not be this high. So if we can do a digital version. We went that way and did it about half and half one year, and that was a little bit hard to track. I know the schools struggled with that, about which ones had done electronically, and they have to keep up with that. If they get a piece of paper, they scan it in and they know it's done. But it's, when it comes in digitally, they have to pick it up and, and record it, too. So I know they struggled with that one year. So the next year, we went back to the paper, but we can always review it. Yeah, digital is becoming our friend. It's getting, you know, you have to have certain things. We looked at DocuSign, fifty thousand dollars. Yes, I, I sent Patrick away when he came to my door with that quote. But you could send out all kinds, like we did contracts, we did a mini version where we had, just had a few, because it was about the time we closed and we'd sent out teaching contracts. We were only, we were down to about a hundred and ten. Well, it was three hundred dollars. That was fine. But if you need to do it as a system for what we would need, the quote was fifty thousand. It was forty-nine nine ninety-nine, and we decided that we, we could send it, we could send a courier to their house for that. So it seemed a little excessive.
I have a question about travel.
Okay.
I see, and it just happens to be here, but it's I believe people have noticed that there still is a lot of travel here. And I don't know if that's something that we might could look at putting a little bit to save some money. Has there been any discussions about limiting a lot of professional learning travel?
Can I, let me give you, tell you what's in here. One thing that has changed is we used, the way we used to budget staff development, it all went under twenty-two-ten. Well, they changed it. And so instructional staff, like teachers and pair pros, and sometimes you can capture counselors and things like that. They actually go in twenty-two-thirteen now. So you'll see money in twenty-two-thirteen, and it is straight up what we earn for staff development. If it is anyone that's not defined as instructional, like me, the council, I mean, the social workers, because this happens to be for the social workers. Now, some of this is for hospital homebound. Now, hospital homebound, at the moment, we cannot eliminate the travel. We're trying to work on what can and can't we do virtually with that student. But that is something we've asked. But hospital homebound, right now, we're still paying, and it's about two thousand dollars a year. Otherwise, it's travel for training. They put in the normal request because we don't know what's going to be offered to us. We think there are going to be a lot more virtual offerings. We figure the registration is going to be higher than it used to be because they know, they know we're stuck with it. But right now, they just budgeted as normal. But if it's, when you see it in school admin, it means the administration at the school has asked, most of the time, it's just the professional development and for the bookkeeper to drive back and forth to the central office when needed. They don't have to do that very much anymore because we send a courier and they drop a board vehicle. So we don't have to do that. But I was going to say.
Yeah, I would say one example is Mark Wilson. He's a, he's been here before, taught many administrators, actually mentors one of them. And quite a few of them, I shot out some stuff where he's kind of reducing his rates to do some things virtually, leadership-wise, to see what kind of interest we had amongst our principals or chiefs. I was amazed, the response, positive response rate. I knew he's popular here, well-liked, and somebody they just really connected with. So that's a good example where we may spend some leadership money, travel money, really.
We would shift it.
P D shifted toward that.
And, and professional development can be, it can be, you can say contracted services and have somebody come to you. If you have a large group, sometimes that's cheaper, you get them to come here. But do you have to take them out of class to do that? And how much would you have to take them out? Because then you have subs. But we have had Harbin and Hartley come to do legal here before. But the way it works, if it's in that category, if it's for the proper people, they can move that travel. If they need to use it for registration, we just watch the budget and make sure they don't exceed the pot they are allowed.
Yeah, two more examples. Harbin, Harbin, last week, we had about twenty-five in here for a legal seminar with them with other people across Georgia for a small fee. And then we've also asked the admin, who's, who's interested in a gal? We're not sending everybody. We know we can't send everybody. But kind of pick one, and really summer's better than winter. Winter's more geared toward your central office staff, be it Tony going, or me, or somebody like that, or one of the chiefs. But the summer's geared toward principals, any, any of us in admin. But if we can choose your professional organization, because a lot of them belong to like elementary school, principals association, for principals, things like that. Choose one of them that you really want to go to, let's make it work. Because to keep expanding that network, to keep in touch with the network, can't go to all of them anymore. That's kind of been cut out. And they understood that. So they're all kind of prioritizing which of them's most important so they can do it. Because if it's going to be important to them, they can bring stuff back to all of us, why not? And so that's kind of the way we're treating it, too.
And overall, for FY twenty, we had budgeted about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand for professional learning. This has been brought down to less than a hundred thousand, it's right at a hundred. But it's scattered all over the budget. So y'all really don't get to see that. I get to keep up with it because there's a sub code that goes with it and I have to make sure everybody uses the sub code. But it has, it has come down significantly, so over sixty thousand dollars. Okay, pages forty-two through forty-four are the nurses' budgets. It's by school. And you'll see one that says county nurse. I did keep that. That is coded as an eighty-ten. It's not at the school level, but that's specifically for that director. If y'all don't have any other questions about that, we'll go to page forty-five. And this is improvement of instruction. This is where professional learning used to be, and a piece of it is still. Under operating expense, you'll also see the technology department. And like I said, Mr. Shea worked with me. We worked very closely and we were able to reduce that operating budget. First, he was able to just flat reduce it, but we did take fifty-two thousand and we're going to have it in S P L O S T. So it is, it's covered in the S P L O S T budget, as you'll see it shortly. Staff development here, too. This is not all of it. This is just for very specific people that qualify under that twenty-two-ten. So we did not take everything away, but that budget still did go down significantly. Another reduction you'll see here, a position was moved, was eliminated. So most of that two-hundred-and-eight-thousand-dollar decrease you'll see is the reduction of one position that was a coordinator. And because we reduced here, you know, that helps offset instruction. But that was, when we say we're down four and a half certified slots, this is one of them. Behind that, on page forty-six, you'll see the actual technology budget broken down. These are the pieces he left in, in place. And I will say, one thing Mr. Shea mentioned to me, depending on if we choose an L M S and which L M S, there's a possibility it could eliminate another budget item he has in here called Safari Montage. It's twenty-two thousand dollars a year. So I mean, there are things, if we do this, we might be able to eliminate this. So right now, I, I have the L M S place marker in there, but there may be some things, other things we can reduce because it kind of does the same thing. It just depends on which one. And I, I honestly can say, I am not an expert in this field. I have to listen to them. So when they get down to where they choose that one, we may be able to eliminate some other expense.
And I didn't see, and it's probably here, I just don't know if it's in technology. I know that they installed a camera in each classroom. And it's my understanding that it's recorded twenty-four hours a day and are stored offsite somewhere. Do they cloud somewhere?
Tony, can you help us? You know, we, we actually had the question a few weeks ago, and Tony actually.
Yeah, there's a subnet that's out there that, that those things record to, that's sort of a separate thing from the, from the classroom cameras. There, we've got drives located throughout the system that stores on those things. And then every thirty days, it tapes over those, it just continuously tapes over those on those hard drives. But it's, it's a different, channel is not the right word. I'm not a tech guy. But it's, there's a sub, there's a subnet work that's taking care of that in the background and just keeps recording over itself.
So I guess my question is, if it's out there, for lack of a better word, on cloud somewhere. Do we have to pay, do we pay a fee that our company?
I think it's stored on hard drives. It's, it's actually stored on a hard drive and every thirty days, it records over itself. And that's, I think those hard drives are, are here internally. They're not, they're not cloud-based. I think, I can get that answer for sure from, from the way it's.
I just didn't know if that was a fee, we were still a fee, if that was something.
Shouldn't be, if it's on a hard drive, plus if we have a cloud space. Yeah, I think those are, those are on site, those hard drives, that it just keeps recording and taking over.
Yeah, it's set and I think it just keeps going.
So every thirty days.
I actually have sent a text out and we'll see if we can get an answer.
And that's actually one of the things we had a few teachers test out for us the past few weeks, to kind of see where, if we're teaching a blended model for some kids at home, can some of those teachers teach in their classroom and project it at home at the same time? We found they could easily do that with the Promethean board there or at the board. And then if we had a device called Swivel, you use it with an iPad, it would actually follow the teacher around. So there's some things, you wouldn't want every teacher to have that. There are some things out there where we can enhance getting that classroom instruction into the home as well, if it's not a true virtual model, if it's a blended model or something like that, and so.
Well, we'll see if we can get an absolute answer on that, too. But overall, it's a reduction of a little over two-hundred thousand dollars in that category. You'll see the staff development is just the piece for curriculum. And it would actually be for technology and data clerks. See, y'all have any questions about those three pages? On page forty-eight, now this is the instructional staff training. These are estimates. When we threw this out to the schools, I mean, really, right now, we don't truly know what's going to be offered next year. But this is what would actually go straight to teachers, teachers in pairs in the classroom. So right now, that's what they have requested at this time. It, we may need to change it at a later date, so it might be a budget, a minimum item later in the year.
And it may go up a little if, if I've got the right category. It's some of this professional development we do in July, if we do get a new learning management system. So it may be some areas where we want to make sure teachers prepare.
It's in here.
Yeah.
We, I think it is.
Yeah, and we make sure, we've, we've told principals, don't, don't, don't have your teachers not participate because you may think you may max, you may be reaching the end of your budget. If it's professional development, we need it to get this new L M S down right. Let's make sure they have enough time and let's compensate for it.
And I believe most of the quotes had a component in it, in that forty thousand. It did cover that, but we were concerned they might need more because it was X number of days, depending on which system it was. It, one might have two days, one might have five. Well, sometimes people get it in two days and sometimes they don't. So that's when we might need to rearrange a few things. Okay, we'll go on to page forty-nine. This is media services. This is for your media specialist, and each media center does still have a pair pro. And then all the operating expense that goes with the media center. At the top, it went up slightly, and that is simply steps that were there for the specific staff. Theirs does not appear to be moving, but it's the actual pair pros and specialists that we have in those areas. And then at the bottom, we receive X amount of money on our allotment sheet. This is going to give the schools a little bit more than what we earn for them. I believe it's seven to eight thousand dollars more than what we earned on midterm. At this time, we would like to leave it alone. Their management system for their books is about twelve hundred dollars a year per school for the renewal. This is the program they have chosen and are happy with at this time. So at beyond the twelve hundred, you know, that's all they have to spend to buy books that go in there. And it can be digital, it can be any kind of something that is housed in the media center. Now, we buy their computers for them at S P L O S T. So just know they don't, you don't have to worry about them covering that. But overall, it's an increase of about twenty-four hundred dollars. And again, behind the initial page is each school's budget. And that runs to page fifty-five. If there are no questions, I'll move to page fifty-six, general admin, excuse, general administration. And that is a portion of this office. It's a superintendent, assistant superintendent, superintendent secretary, and board attorney. Then it's the funk, the operating expense that goes along with just those offices. It's not. It's not the rest of the central office. It's just those four offices. The top category, we were able to reduce slightly. Operating, we were able to reduce almost 2% for a total reduction of about $4,500. This does include our e-board support, our legal support, our policy. The GSBA reviews our policies, and they tell us when new things come out that change, that we might need to look at a policy, and they make recommendations to us. That is all incorporated in here. Y'all have questions in this area? Page 59 is school administration. Again, we know who those staff people are. So their budget at the top, we were able to reduce by 1.2%. These operating budgets run the school offices, and that does include their phone, fax, and cell phones. That's something that's fun to chase sometimes. We are going more and more digital, so we do try to get better contracts on the phone service. But overall, it's a reduction of about $13,400. Again, we try to keep, try to get them to hold this the same. Most of their operating budget is for their phone, fax, and we cover the internet service here at central office, but the phone, fax, and cell phones, that will take between, depending on school, $7,000 to $8,000. So there's not a lot of other money in there. Each school has a budget behind the initial sheet. Back to page 65. Do y'all have questions? Okay. Page 66 is business services. That's my area. This is payroll, accounts payable, business services, generalist, myself, all the supplies that we need in that department. We were able to reduce slightly, $2,450. We actually pay the renewal for the financial software system. That exceeds $30,000 a year. And they're going to hold it the same. They're not going to have an increase this time. It is also our offsite backup for the financial system. We actually have a dual backup. We have one with NextGen Harris, the company that we deal with. And then we have a secondary one at a different location, at one of our, one of our locations that we don't reveal, so that we have a secondary backup for the financials. It is actually something that is heavily recommended that we do. So we've been following those guidelines from the state for a long time. Do y'all have any questions about $2,500? Next area is M&amp;O, maintenance and operations, on page 68. We were able to reduce salaries by, print's getting smaller, 16.34%. This is another place where we were able to eliminate a position. We had a staff member move out of a position earlier this year into a position at the central office from, it was a central office position. So we have eliminated, eliminated in M&amp;O. It was a safety-driven position. So we have reduced it here. Now, I told Stacy not to panic when I took a bunch of that utility budget out for him. But I had made a note on page 69 that that is the part, the electricity and gas, that we will be putting in the CARES money. And so we'll just do it 1/12th a month until we use the entire amount. And then we'll, we'll request probably quarterly our reimbursement for that. But overall, it's a reduction of $1,182,811. Another thing I do need to remind you is, we did have an increase in this budget because of some insurance issues. We had insurance revenue coming in of $330,000 and expense. That's captured in here too, because we amended the budgets. So these do reflect the amended numbers. So the first 330 was free. I told him, I said, you don't even try with me. So that was not a repeatable item because it was insurance. Then we had about, it was over 100 for that position. And then we took the CARES too. So I think I did panic him just a tiny bit, but I promise it's all in place. We actually went through all the repair and maintenance to make sure that we, if we could pull in a little bit, we did. He didn't have a lot that I could take over into SPOS, though, that was identifiable for SPOS. We do the big stuff over there as it is. Y'all have questions here? Next category is transportation, and it's on page seven. Okay, go ahead.
And this, this is really more of a question, I guess, because I know tomorrow night is coming up on our planning services. And of course, it's like a year or two, and I mean, it's very expensive. But we didn't know if we'd bid on that new one.
I'm not aware of a bid. It is on a renewal if we choose to. I'm not sure what's being presented tomorrow night, but.
I'm not aware of a bid. I was made aware of that past week of where, I think we talked about last year, to bid that out. At this point in time, July running around, my recommendation would be, we start the bidding process and go ahead and put it in the books. And we'll start the bidding process like in December, January for next year. But make sure we bid, we have to really bid mid-year. It's too late. If we bid now, with the, especially with everything happening, I'd be worried about that. But I think we need to go ahead and mention it and have it for the board in minutes to say, and it'll be my responsibility to make sure that our fee's out. I would say we post it somewhere in December. If we do December, January, that gives plenty of time to pick the contractor for transition, if necessary, if they're not the lowest.
I'm not sure that contract runs fiscal year. I think that contract runs, it may end in December.
But we'll check on that.
I think it ends in December.
I was told it may have kind of been adjusted to start July 1, but if it hasn't, then we'll.
I don't think it runs with fiscal year. Because some of them don't. And most of the maintenance contracts, when it comes to landscaping and things like that, they are, they are bid, and they run with the fiscal year. So, but I'm pretty sure that one doesn't. I think it's off. Because I think we made a change like in August one year, but somehow it's due in December, I think.
We'll check it.
I've seen bids on many of the other things, but you know, this, I just don't know. And there's another different time. I asked that, that I'm just.
Well, it is.
We can check, that's.
It's worth checking.
Any other questions? Okay. Page, I'm sorry, 70 is transportation. This is another area. We've left this budget alone. We ran the numbers. We know the employees. We were able to reduce it just a little bit, 1.14% in salaries and benefits. And it was just a little bit of tightening up. We always do try to allow for one, one or two potential monitors that we might need to add to a bus, and one, or usually just one extra driver. But if we, if we run as normal and still do field trips and all that, all that is still in here. Since at this time, we don't know what next year will hold, we're trying to just keep that normalcy. And here's what we, we know we've typically done. If we can get back to that, that's what we're going to do. So there is not a whole lot of change. Overall, it went down less than 1%, but that's about $31,000. Okay, y'all have questions? I know you're probably, I see people's eyes glaze over after a while doing finance. But page 72 is central support. Now, this is a larger portion of the central office. And it again is defined by state, the state who goes in this, personnel, accountability, trying to think of all the employees that are in this section. Some of our clerical staff is in this area. And anything that goes with them, copier maintenance, paper, supplies, things like that. Overall, we do still have a reduction of 0.64%, and it's $5,538. And I do want to, I'm sorry.
It's very small, ma'am, and I'd be curious, what is the rental of land or building?
If we rent a room at, say, a local tech college to do something, occasionally we'll have to do that. Or in other areas, like in M&amp;O, something like that could be storage buildings or something. We don't move very often, but if we rent a room, that goes in that category. We'll move on to page 75, other support service. The one item that is in here is our RISA support. The RISA support is estimated, but it is determined, it's a fee plus a cost per FTE. So this is an estimate. We've managed to stay under $20,000 for quite some time. They have not changed those fees. They may someday, but so far, they have not. So we are not asking for an increase at all in this area. Page 76, starts special revenue. And this is the summary page, and I know this print, I'm adding more and more grants, so it's getting a little, little smaller. Of course, no debt service anticipated at this time. Our SPOS, we have our estimated fund balance, and that is going to be based on when I get bills for these current projects. That's when I think they're going to come. That fund balance can change a little bit if the billings, I have to estimate how much I think they are, when they're going to get here. So that's based on my best guess of what work they'll have done by then. But we did a very conservative revenue calculation at 440. So, um, excuse me, 420,000. Our average has been about 440, but again, I'm a little concerned about our revenue, and I don't want to overstate this. Because if we have expense to go with it, you don't want to get your expense ahead of your revenue. We have, I actually have other pages that give more description, so I'm going to go on through Title I, Special Ed, Perkins Plus, Title II, Title IV, GLRS, and Bright from the Start are absolute estimates. We have, we do not have concrete information on them. Our school food service, she has done a budget based on at least 85% participation in the The CARES grant, you'll see, has been added. I believe it is going to come across as a Fund 402, but I have not been able to confirm that at this time. Now, if you go to page 77, you'll see I've recorded no debt service in SPOS. Oh, no, it's 400 a month, not 420. I apologize. But in SPOS, capital outlay, which is that M&amp;O, where you're estimating $500,000, that's the same that we did this year. In technology, we are bumping it up to $1 million because we don't know exactly what we've got going on next year. We don't have to spend it. This is money we have sitting in the bank. So if we don't need it here, but I have to ask permission before we can do that. And this could be for computers, iPads, Chrome, you know, Chromebooks, servers. We have a server that's limping and happens to be the one that I work on all the time, but it is acting up, and they're probably going to have to replace it. And it's typically around $8,000. But any equipment, any technology equipment that is needed, this is where we're going to get it. The $52,000 that he pulled out of his general fund budget has gone here too. And then at the moment, we're still planning to purchase those six, those six replacement buses, as we have been trying to do the last few years to update our fleet. Page 78. Now, we start with these federal grants. These are the initial federal grants as they were this year. That means they don't have any carryover. These are clean how they start. And what we got approved at the state level to do with them. These all could change, but this is what we hope to do with it like we did. But like a school, if they wanted a different software program, or they want a few, a little more contracted services, or to add a pair of pro, this would change later. And I would have to bring it to you as an amendment if we don't know before we do a tentative approval. Hopefully, we will know. But you'll see Title I, it runs through page, it's very long, it's very detailed. Runs through page 84. CARES is very, very short. I know I already need an adjustment, the NND set aside for private school instead of $2,000, will need to be about $2,700. And then our utilities, you'll see that $2,600. On 85, you'll see Title VI, which is special education. And it runs through page 87, where you'll pick up with special education preschool regular program grant. And these are the same things we've done this year. They may get, like I said, sometimes we have to make things fit with the grants, but they have to meet all the criteria. These are all approved at the state level before we can spend a penny, so. Page 88 are our two CTAE federal grants. There is sometimes one additional one, it's about $2,000, but we typically don't know about it until later in the year. And it's actually called carryover, but it's not carryover. It's just when they have extra money, and sometime during the year, they will kick that out to us. Page 89 is Title II. Title II, we can use for a variety of things. One is training. If we need additional training money, we can go here for high quality, to make sure we have high-quality staff in our schools. Part of this money was transferred to Title IV last year, and you'll see it on the next page. And that was to cover the trauma counselor, which is not going to, has been eliminated for next year. But it also helps cover the college and career coach. So that one will come back. The money for the trauma counselor, since we will not have that, we have to meet, and this is a federal programs thing, we have to meet a guideline that has to do with what that trauma counselor provided in a certain, like a counselor. So we will have to put a certain amount of money, which instead of $80,000, will be more like $8,000. Then that money can be used for another purpose. It actually can be transitioned if we, if we can make some things work consolidation. It might be able to get back to the school level, where maybe those pair of pros can come. That's, that's kind of the goal. It's just we, we have not been able to go through all of it just yet. And that, we'll work on that, though. I think that takes us to page 92, food service. And Beth Thompson, she does a fantastic job. I cannot brag on her enough. We are one of the only systems in the state of Georgia whose food service department is totally in the black on their own without us. We pay the power to the building, for the buildings therein. But they don't have a separate meter, so it is hard to break it out anyway, but we pay that for them. One thing we may do for them, if the board allows, is she had planned out of her fund balance, and she's required to keep three months' fund balance. She has lost significant funding over March, April, and May. I know it was $16,000 to $18,000 in March, $24,000 in April, and about $26,000 in May. And that's simply us not having school open and kids going through, doing their normal thing. We haven't served as many kids, although she served over 90,000 meals during that time. When the kids are in school, if they want that extra piece of pizza, or that hamburger, whatever it is, they can go buy it. And that's an à la carte item, and she, we make a little more money off those. But she said, she told me, she says I can handle it. And she did that because she plans well. So she is trying to buy a freezer, a double freezer for the high school. And initially, I thought it was about $10,000. It's about $25,000. She was going to take care of it on her own out of her fund balance. It pushes her on her limit. She says she's still fine, but we would like to request from the board to, should that SPOS for her because of the severe loss, and we are probably going to walk into a year where those losses may continue, just because she has such a strong program. We just hate to break it down. We have the money in SPOS available, so we will, we will have to officially ask for that amendment. But if y'all are that approval, we don't have to have amendment.
It would be innings would be more expensive anyway, because we're not sure if you can open up moderate or low. If you're low, you can use regular trays. We've already had an order for August. So we're using disposable trays in August just to play it safe, not knowing what the environment's going to be. So you already have decreased expenses just because of that.
And she is required to place her order for the first of school in May. So we didn't know what we would be doing for sure at that time, but she had to place the order. So she played it safe. It is more expensive for her to do the disposables, but she committed to it, and that's what she went ahead and did. So we're prepared for it. Okay. Now, this tab, I, this is y'all's favorite thing in the world. The next tab says salary information, and it's our supplements. There are no changes to what has been approved in FY '20. Now, last month or the month before, y'all did approve an AD change for an additional month. Now, last month or month before, y'all did approve an AD change for an additional month. Everybody's going to nod, because that's what was on the P A R.
Well, we went from a 12-month down to a one-month, right?
Well, what it was, the person involved is 11 months already. It is a one-month thing, so.
But I'm saying, we saved, we saved 12 months of money to.
Correct, yes. So that change is in here, but it was approved in '20. But I did want to just point that out. Other than that, nothing has changed. Everything is exactly the same. I will always say this, this is at the superintendent's discretion. If he decides not to assign a supplement for this year, it is his discretion to not assign it to anyone. These are approved as a position. So if you don't fill that position, then you don't pay the supplement.
Yeah, there's actually one position that won't be filled. Really wasn't filled this year. So there's no reason to pay supplement for it if we're not doing it. So inefficient. So we're going to, that is a small amount of money, $6,000, but still something we caught. So I just want to make sure we wouldn't, we wouldn't fund it if nobody's doing it.
And that's true of the sports, too. If we don't have somebody to be one of the sports coaches, we don't fill it, we don't pay it. So y'all have, y'all have questions about supplements? The next tabs are the same. I just provided supplementary information, the prior year's budget, and it's the most recent amended budget. I'm asking for a budget amendment tomorrow night, so I will add that to this mix. Did you get your email about that amendment? Okay. It's, it's just cleanup. Part of it, I do want to explain the transfer. I had only budgeted $5 million from that designated money for Pickens Jr. We added a phase and we sped it up. So I did not expect to have to pay all that this year. We have the money. This will clean out that designated money. We did spend, we did transfer some last year, about a little over 600,000. So originally, it was 9.3 million. All of that money, once I had to get your approval on the transfer, then I can do the transfer. But that's the only reason that that's on there. But you'll see it in coming out of general fund and going into SPOS. So they should be bolded and italic, so you can see where they are. The other item is just a cleanup item, and I think y'all are aware of what that was for. Okay? All right, that's all I've got. Other than, y'all think about '22? These are some things for '22. We probably will not get CARES money again, 747,000. We will probably have an austerity reduction, a cut. Of course, don't know what that will be. Between those two, that, those numbers become a little bit scary. The way this budget is right now, I need close to $2 million to make it right. And I know we still have some things to adjust. We do not have a tax digest. We anticipate growth, hopefully as much growth as we had last year. So that could help. I'm concerned about the, the cash flow when it comes to local revenue. If the economy will settle down, the revenue will settle down. But as we go into '22, if we burn too much of our fund balance in this year, in '21, then when we go into '22, we may be looking at some more severe cuts or, and/or having to have a tax anticipation. No, if we can't, we don't get that tax revenue until mid-November, the earliest. It's at least the third or fourth week before we see any significant money coming in. So we have to run from July to October. October would be the month that we would start to cut it close. It always was when we had to have it hand. So in the back of your mind, you know, just know there may be changes that we don't have some of the advantages we have right now. We don't like to furlough. I don't think this year, we will need to furlough. But just in the back of your mind, please always keep in mind that next year. I'm more concerned about '22 than I am about '21. '21, we can handle. We've got it. We've got money in the bank, we've got a plan. Even though it's going to change a good bit, I still think we're in good shape. If it continues in '22, that changes the game. That mean, you know, that means we need to really tighten our belt a little. So we may recommend some, some things we adjust as we go this year. If there are places we can pull it in, we probably need to. Just to position us well at the end of this year, so we're not doing anything severe next year in that '22. We don't want to have to do something severe, so. Don't like doing that to our staff, don't like doing that to our community. Keep in mind, I'm a taxpayer, too, in this county. So I always do try to keep that in mind as we go through. But right now, we can handle it. We may need to change some of this a little bit, but.
Do we officially have the CARES number?
No. We do not, and we do not know when we'll get it.
But is that an actual number we have been told officially? That is what we'll.
We have been told that is what we received, even down to the 747-601. But we are now going through some training on what is expected. I have a budget document to help us plan the budget. It is now in the consolidated application. There are due dates attached to it. So if we know, we need to kind of get some other things settled before we request it. It's, it's just like any other federal grant, it can be amended. But we need to know that we're going to be able to keep that M and O money offloaded over there. But as quick as we can, we'll go ahead and get it approved, because you can't get money back until it's approved. And then when you spend it, it's a, you spend it first and then you get it.
May I ask an FTE virtual school question? If we go, whichever model, when we go into FTE, my assumption, which might be incorrect, is you'll still receive funding for those students. Whichever model. Will it be full funding for them, or is it modified if they're doing not brick and mortar?
If, if it is, it has to meet the criteria that the state sets. And Mr. Shea and his department, they're very good when it comes to decoding. That is one of the first things I said, is if we do this virtual school stuff, can we keep earning money for the students we serve? And the answer was yes. Now, I don't know all the ins and outs about it, but you do have to serve them. And that's one thing you have to be able to prove it to. So that is something that we're working on, making sure that we can cover. But we do have to provide certain hours and age-appropriate material and things like that. So, but yes, it is earnable.
I'm assuming any accommodations that they, if they're gifted or specialty or.
Yes. You do still have to meet all the qualifications, whatever they are now, you still have to meet them. You can't just teach them the same thing you're teaching everybody else. But one thing that we, I will throw out here, too, that we've talked about is if we have a significant population that doesn't come on site. We have contracted teachers and planned for 15 kindergarten classes. Right now, we typically have about 280 registered. We have 100. So that's concerning, because we also have 15 pair of pros that are lined up for those positions. So as this develops, you know, we may have to make some changes in, in job duties and what people do. And this teacher might be virtual and this one might be brick and mortar in the classroom. So those are things that, you know, I think there could be a lot of movement. So we have issued contracts to those teachers. So we do need to make sure that we are able to earn them in some way. I've been worried about that the whole time.
Well, since we're back to FDI, FDI, I had a thought as well. And I'm fairly certain of the answer's going to be no. But I would love to see the state give us, push back our FTE deadline in October so that we make sure that we have all of our students registered. That's going to take a long time to get that done. And I would like to see if we could have some sort of, if they could cut us some slack on that if we need it, maybe we definitely. But to let us have a little more time to make sure that we can capture all the money that we possibly can with our.
I will tell you this, when it comes to financial transmission, they have extended our deadlines. Now, not significantly, but I mean, they've given us an extra month on certain things, like the initial budget. They know most counties are not going to approve a tentative or a final budget in, in June. Y'all are going to see a spending resolution tomorrow night. You may see one in July, too. It depends on where we are. I mean, you can decide to do a tentative and roll with that, but they have extended that initial budget deadline by a month. So that has helped, helped up my feelings at least a little bit. But when it comes to some of the financial deadlines, they're still the same, like year end for us. So that means they expect us to be in the office working. There are a lot of counties that do not have their central office up and running. We are still staggering staff in, but like, they are able to work at home successfully. My department, I, I can't brag on them enough either, because they are working. I can see what they do. We are still balancing statements and we're still cutting checks and we're still doing payroll. And June is horrible for payroll, you know, because we do three months and then at least one other supplemental. And they're all, I mean, everybody's working. We're still meeting all our deadlines. I don't think we'll have any trouble doing that. They might. We haven't heard anything yet, but we've also not seen a date set.
Like I said, I think it's probably fairly unrealistic on my part, but as long as we're hoping.
We would hope to have them settled by October, I would think.
We should. And we're really, it'd be nice if the, let's say, would give us the October FTE held harmless.
Yes.
That would even be better than let's, let's work it for March. But I think they could do that for October. And we've got quite a bit of support for that. Just depends, is there enough support? And can the state handle that if they did?
That, that's the other thing is, if they hold us harmless, then we're running on last year's numbers. Give approval, because we need to keep going.
We do.
We need to keep moving.
We have to move forward, and I think everybody realizes that. So, and we'll do that as soon as we're allowed to, and we'll run with it. But I'm proud. I mean, what Amy said a second ago, I, I don't know if everybody could have done that that quick to set up a home office. With finance, you have to have extra layers of security in place. So it's not just me taking my laptop home to work from home. That's, that's a no-brainer. That's easy. When you talk about finances, that's a totally different story. To get that set up before everything happened and to be ready for it when it did happen, that is a true testament of what they did, technology did, and Dr. Webb and Tony and everybody else who was a part of that to make it happen. I wasn't here, so I can't take credit when that happened. It wasn't me. It was these guys right here. So definitely proud of them, and it's, it's nice what they did.
I will say, I was the first one at Patrick's door, panicked, going, I was the only one that had a laptop. And I said, I need laptops and I need secure access. And how are we going to do this? Oh, calm down, that'll be fine. And in a week, it was not. But I, we started early and we were sending computers home to test two weeks before we dismissed school, because we heard. And I was terrified. I thought if we can't run payroll and we can't run accounts payable and, you know, our system, you know, we, we need these things in place, there was no choice. But technology, I'm going to tell you, Joey Sadfield and Patrick Shea put up with us. And our going home going, this VPN is not connecting, this is, you know, we have this and. They helped us get everything set up. So when the kids went home with theirs, my staff went out with tubs and boxes, with calculators and scanners and printers. And then we came back after spring break, after we'd been out for three weeks. And they, they helped us more and gave us bigger scanners. We use scanners a lot. We're going more and more digital. But we've learned, you know, everybody adapted very quickly. I mean, people who've been here for over 30 years didn't think they liked it, really were hesitant. And they went out there and they've knocked it out of park. And I mean, now it's like, hey, this is a piece of cake. We got this. So I'm very proud of, of the crew here and everybody else in the central office. We just had to produce stuff real fast. We had payroll running a week after we were dismissed. So it, it was, we can't, we came on site occasionally, but, and then I, I came back a lot. But we'd get stuff and take it to people, meet me in the parking lot, so. But it, we worked it out. Everybody in here has, has really worked hard. I mean, if everybody didn't contribute, it wouldn't have worked. But I think everybody here has, has worked hard. And the teachers, I mean, we were in the back room doing all this and the teachers were out on the front lines. So we want to keep them supported. And I knew if we couldn't pay them, that was going to be a big deal.
That's our job, isn't it? Support the teachers, support the.
Absolutely.
Principals, the classrooms. That's what we're supposed to do. You did it well. Y'all did it well.
It's not me, it's, it's us. We all did it. We're very, we're very proud of everybody. I've, I've talked to all kinds of folks I haven't talked to in a long time. I've talked to, but everybody knows my phone number now. I need a PO. We got it done. But no, it, it was a team effort and really proud of everybody.
It is nice when you talk to other superintendents in some places, and they weren't, unfortunately, they weren't as ready or prepared. And they got through it, they did. They had a good team as well, and they pulled through it. But it was nice that we were prepared. It was nice that even now, like we talked about the, the lunch situation and the monies of food nutrition, to where there's a nice surplus there, a reserve we needed, we could help out as well. And others are like, no, we really don't want, we can't open up with to-go trays. We can't afford that. And so it's nice to have that flexibility, resources to support them. So again, that's because of careful planning, being conservative with your budget, like you have been. And keep moving forward. And we're going to, August 3, like we said before, as long as the governor lets us, we're going to open up. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you all very much. Any questions? If we're good.